Good evening. Tonight is Monday, October the 9th, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. To begin with, we'll have our opening ceremony, which will be the Presentation of Colors by the Mount Pleasant High School Air Force JROTC Cadets. And our National Anthem will be by the Cox Mill Elementary School Chorus. If you all will please stand.
What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does our star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order. Hands. Hands. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Well, let's review. The colors were by Mount Pleasant High School's Air Force JROTC cadets, and they consisted of the following: Cadet Major Anna Merrithew, Cadet Major Kayla Burris, Cadet Captain Trinity Ramos, and Cadet Second Lieutenant Eric Lozano. Our National Anthem sung by the Cox Mill Elementary Chorus. And those young people are Sanika Owale, Maggie Bailey, Reagan Bailey, Gavin Barber, Gordon Bell, Kalen Bowman, Riley Caruso, Mason Hall, Griffin Harris, Agnes Jacob, Leila Johnson, Anushka Kagedi, Amelia Konigsberg, Joda Lawrence, Hasini Malaya. Sorry about that. Cameron McDonald, Henzica Nansali, Madison Narim, Gia Panaguah, Ellie Patterson, Eric Pope, Noah Powers, Kiara Sawo, Mac Schoenberg, Dejana Ruli, and Hayden Yost. And they are all directed by Sloan Wood. That was our chorus from Cox Mill Elementary. Let's give them another big hand. Tonight, our SRO is Deputy Thousand from Mount Pleasant Middle School, and he's supporting us tonight. Give him a welcome when you get a chance to see him. And Board Members, it's time to set the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to add an item. There was a request to add an agenda item of, for an addition to our architect's... An amendment to that contract. Now, I think it needs to be an adjustment to the contract.
Okay. So, there's an agenda, a motion to add an agenda item to amend the architect's contract. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Fur, thank you. All right, so we have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any information on that. So, if it's informational only, I think that's fine, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to vote on something that we don't have information on at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adding this agenda item, and this would go to the end of our agenda, It'll be item number 8.2. And it won't be under consent, it'll actually be 9 point, actually 8.2, but it'll be an action item or something that we, it won't be a consent item.
So, before the closed session?
Yes, it's before the closed session. All right. With that being said, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, so that, so five to one with Ms. Furtinbaugh dissenting. All right, so that, now, Board Members with the amended agenda, is there a motion to now accept the amended agenda?
So moved second.
All right, Tim Fur, David Harrison seconds that motion. Any discussion on our agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the agenda now as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The agenda is accepted, five to one with Ms. Furtinbaugh dissenting. All right, that carries us to recognitions. Item 4.1, the CCS Principal of the Year. Ms. Linda Jones is coming to the podium, and Dr. Louder is going down with her.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair and Board Members. I would like to ask for Liz Snyder and her family to come forward, please. Let me get on the right line up there. All right. We want to congratulate Liz Snyder, Principal of Hickory Ridge Middle School, who's been selected as the 2018 Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year in a program sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and Wells Fargo. Snyder was surprised, and yes, she was, with an announcement during a Hickory Ridge Middle School staff meeting on Wednesday, September 20th. Snyder has been principal of Hickory Ridge Middle since 2015. She previously served as principal in Thomasville, North Carolina. Snyder began her tenure in school administration as an assistant principal in 2005, and began her profession in education as a secondary English teacher. Snyder holds a bachelor's degree in English from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, a master's degree in educational leadership from Gardner-Webb University, an education specialist degree from App State, and is currently a doctoral student at UNC Charlotte. Snyder will now compete with other principals across the state for the North Carolina Principal of the Year. After the state selection process is completed, one principal will be selected as the 2018 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. CCS principals nominate among their peers, and a selection panel comprised of former CCS Principals of the Year, as well as other administrators, interview finalists, and select a winner. Each regional Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives a $1,000 cash award for his or her school, and a $1,000 cash award for personal use. The 2018 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives $3,000 for his or her school, and $3,000 for his or her personal use. Regional award recipients will be selected by February 2018, and the state-level winner will be announced in the spring at a special luncheon in Raleigh. We want you all to join us in congratulating Ms. Snyder, our 2017-18 CCS Principal of the Year. And let me just say that that young man has a great third-grade teacher in his home county because she texted Mama that he was missing from school that day. Almost spoiled our surprise. He's going that way, Liz. All right, so now we would like to ask Mr. Richard Wells, aka Richie Wells, to join us at the front with his family. Wow, I would like for you all to join us in congratulating Richard Wells. We know him fondly as Richie, Assistant Principal of Instruction at Wyancoph Elementary School, who's been selected as the 2017-18 Assistant Principal of the Year for Cabarrus County Schools. Wells was surprised with this news at Wyancoph Elementary School on September 29th during a staff meeting. Wells joined Cabarrus County Schools in 2012 as an Assistant Principal of Instruction at CC Griffin Middle School, and moved to Wyancoph Elementary as the Assistant Principal of Instruction in 2014. Prior to serving at Cabarrus County Schools, Wells taught elementary school in a neighboring district. Wells graduated with a bachelor's degree from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte in elementary education. He also earned his master's degree in school administration, and is currently in a doctoral program for educational leadership at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. CCS Assistant Principals nominate among their peers for the Assistant Principal of the Year Award based on a set of criteria. The top candidates are then interviewed by a panel of administrators, and a winner is selected. We want to congratulate Mr. Wells, our 2017-18 CCS Assistant Principal of the Year.
Mr. Tim Vaughn, Dr. Chris Louder, and Ms. Linda Jones will be presenting the award.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. After a month-long delay, thanks to Mother Nature, we are excited tonight to kick off the eighth year of this wonderful program that honors and celebrates our outstanding teachers. Mr. Vaughn, we thank you and Hilbisch Ford for creating this program, and for your continued support and generosity, and I love the cups, by the way, if you haven't noticed that. Now, it's my pleasure to present our Hilbisch Ford Teachers of the Month for September and October, Kristy Hogan and Dorinda Swerengen. Well, we will begin with Ms. Swerengen, our October honoree. Ms. Swerengen, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward? And am I butchering your last name?
Swerengen.
Swerengen, okay. I can do that. I can swear engine.
The present tense.
Yes. All right. Dorinda Swerengen teaches ALPS English Language Arts at Concord Middle School. She was nominated for this award by a student who wrote, "Mrs. Swerengen is the best. She is kind, hardworking, and determined, and definitely deserving of this award. I've had Mrs. Swerengen for two years now, first at J.N. Frees and now at Concord Middle. She has remained one of my favorite teachers. She is incredibly kind to both students and teachers, and she always has a smile. She makes it her mission to have a personal relationship with every one of her students. She's always there for her students and is a trusted adult, no matter the situation. When we are having a bad day, she will understand and make us laugh. But most of all, Mrs. Swerengen believes not in who we are now, but in who we can be. I have learned so much from her, not only as a teacher, but as a friend." Don't cry, because I'll cry. "There is no teacher more deserving than Mrs. Swerengen. Mrs. Swerengen, thank you for helping your students become who they are meant to be, and for striking that delicate balance between teacher and friend. Congratulations on your selection as Teacher of the Month." And if you will now, please allow Dr. Louder and Mr. Tim Vaughn to present you with your awards. Now, I'm going to ask Ms. Kristy Hogan and her family, and any members of the school's team, to come forward. Kristy Hogan is a fifth-grade teacher at Beverly Hills Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote. Mrs. Hogan is a teacher who has the it factor. Her passion for her profession, for the educational process, and for making academic and social success attainable for each and every student is evident in everything she does. Our son has a severe anxiety disorder and ADHD. He had a challenging summer and was hospitalized. After sharing this information with Mrs. Hogan, she made sure that she and the Beverly Hills School team knew exactly what our son needed to be successful on his very first day of school. I'm happy to report that his first week of school was nothing short of amazing. Mrs. Hogan has taken the time and made the incredible effort to help our son understand that he is valued, important, unique, and strong. She even let him come to school a day before open house to look at the classroom and bring his supplies. She's let him use his toolbox filled with items that help him calm himself as often as he needs, and she has even come up with new tools for him to add to it. Mrs. Hogan has made it a point to be there for him and for our family. She sets the tone of acceptance and understanding in her classroom. These are character traits that are not taught from a scripted lesson plan, but rather through language and modeled behaviors. We know there will be more challenges down the road, but our family feels incredibly confident and grateful that our son is going to have his most successful year yet because of Mrs. Hogan. She is truly amazing and so deserving of this award. Ms. Hogan, thank you for your commitment to ensuring the success of your students, and for modeling acceptance and understanding in your classroom. We congratulate you. Now, please allow Mr. Vaughn and Dr. Louder to do so.
Ms. Ronnie Boone is coming to the podium to announce our award winners for both October and for September.
We'll start our Impact Through Education Award recognitions tonight with AT Allen Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the AT Allen Administrative Team to come forward so they can stand with their students and staff. Our first AT Allen honoree is Lacey Kyle. Would Lacey and her family please come forward? Lacey is a fifth-grade student at AT Allen Elementary School. This quiet, sweet, smiling girl is a master at Taekwondo, a star at softball, takes dance, is active in her church youth group, and puts up with three older brothers, and still keeps straight A's. In kindergarten, her work had to be perfect, and to this day, she still strives to maintain that goal. Lacey shows kindness and hard work in everything she does, whether in the classroom or at Cardio Cardinals, the school's run club for girls. She is supportive and is always striving toward a goal. At the final Cardio Cardinals 5K, Lacey pushed not only herself to finish, but also encouraged her running buddy to finish, even though both girls were exhausted. Lacey's infectious smile, positive attitude, and contribution to her school community make her a great role model at AT Allen. Congratulations, Lacey. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for AT Allen Elementary School. Joel also is a fifth-grade student at AT Allen Elementary School. He is a very caring, outstanding young man, and a hard worker who stays focused. He sets a good example for his peers. Joel goes above and beyond to make sure all students feel safe and sound while at school as a member of the school's safety patrol. One of his teachers said, "Joel is a kid that stands out in my mind as someone who is always willing to do what's best to help another child. He consistently goes out of his way to offer help to teachers and students in need. I love seeing him work with my kindergartners because he is such a kind and caring soul." Joel always has a smile and a greeting for staff and student alike. AT Allen is a better place because of Joel. Congratulations, Joel. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for AT Allen Elementary School. I'm sorry, Gunther. Would Ms. Gunther and her family please come forward? Melissa is a school counselor at AT Allen Elementary School. She goes out of her way to make a positive experience, to make school a positive experience for each and every child. It is very clear that her number-one priority is the well-being of her students. Melissa has a tremendous impact on AT Allen students on a daily basis by helping them with their problems and making their lives a little better. She's always willing to help out with school activities, whether it's Cardio Cardinals, leading a community outreach program, or just stepping up when a teacher asks for help. This year, she is organizing and leading staff and community visits. She goes above and beyond to help not only her third, fourth, and fifth graders, but also to reach out to the kindergarten through second-grade teams. The students and faculty know that if they ever need her, Melissa will always be there to listen, coach, problem-solve, and support them in any way possible. Her students know how much she cares about them, and it is obvious they care about her too. Congratulations, Ms. Gunther, and thank you for making an impact through education at AT Allen Elementary. And our final honoree from AT Allen Elementary School this evening is Ms. Kimber Hurlacher. Would Ms. Hurlacher and her family please come forward? Kimber is the school treasurer and is an absolute asset to AT Allen Elementary. She helps teachers any way she can, and always with a smile on her face. This summer, Kimber transitioned into the treasurer's role after working as the school's data manager. She has stepped into her new position with grace and determination. Kimber is always positive. She is willing to help find answers to questions even when she doesn't know the answer. She ensures that teachers have what they need to make students successful by ordering supplies, offering a kind ear, and, most importantly, making everyone feel valued and treasured, no pun intended. Kimber is always willing to help, no matter how frustrated or bogged down with work she is. She always has a warm smile on her face and is a vital contributor to the morale of AT Allen. Kimber is someone who is able to keep up with the big events and changes, as well as remember, as well as to remember to be attentive to the small details. She's always very calm and treats everyone with respect. AT Allen Elementary would not be the same without her. Congratulations, Mrs. Hurlacher, and thank you for making an impact through education at AT Allen Elementary School. Middle School, and I'd like to invite Ms. Snyder and any other members of the board Snyder and any other members of the school's administrative team to come back up to stand with their students and staff. And an honorary member. Our first honoree from Hickory Ridge Middle School this evening is Isaiah Bullerdick. Would Isaiah and his family please come forward? Known by his peers as a gentle giant, Isaiah reflects the kindness and compassion expected from all Hickory Ridge Middle School students, and he displays it daily. Former teachers describe him as a kind-hearted student who puts others before himself and is always willing to put in the extra work to help others, although it does not necessarily benefit him. Another teacher added, "Isaiah makes you feel like you did something great when you are around him with his positive attitude and hard work ethic." Principal Snyder notes that Isaiah always goes out of his way to say hello and ask, "How is your day?", and observes him always speaking to students in the hallway. She also says that he has a contagious personality of kindness and exudes leadership skills. Coach Hutchins not only enjoys his character on the football field, but also his work ethic. He wishes he had a lot more like him with his personality. In addition to being a Maverick student athlete on the football field, Isaiah enjoys science as his favorite class in school. He admits the hands-on experiments and working with the chemical reactions to elements just get him excited. In his spare time, he states that homework is his top priority, but says hanging with his friends is his favorite pastime. Congratulations, Isaiah. Our next Hickory Ridge Middle School honoree is Lindsay Henderson. Lindsay is known by her peers for her reliability and respectful nature. She also reflects the kindness and dedication expected of Hickory Ridge Middle School students. Lindsay makes it a point to involve herself in school affairs that make a difference on her school, her fellow peers, and the outside world. Her teachers agree that she consistently meets the expectations of classroom and school behaviors, and that they always know she will be doing what she is supposed to do, and she treats everyone with respect. One of her teachers said, "I always know that she will be kind and considerate in her interactions with others, but yet hold them accountable with fairness." Another adds, "She contributes to our team as the motivator, the encourager, and the one never to seek the limelight." Principal Snyder believes that Lindsay's humanitarian heart is going to make her such a beacon of light for so many as she grows and continues her mission work. She is a bright light in our school and will go on to touch more lives in her future. Lindsay is involved in YCI at Hickory Ridge Middle and is a member of the volleyball team. She also serves as a student trainer for football and basketball. Congratulations, Lindsay. Our next Hickory Ridge Middle School honoree is Mary Cashwell. Would Ms. Cashwell and her family please come forward? Mary Cashwell is in her 13th year with Cabarrus County Schools and has served at Hickory Ridge Middle School since it opened in 2010. She is regarded as the constant to the 7th grade as an ELA teacher and mentor to all on the hall. In addition to teaching, she serves as the sponsor to the Maverick Community Club, a club that is dedicated to serving the community in various endeavors or missions and aid. Her peers refer to her as a true servant, adding, "In Mary, that quality transcends her classroom and permeates her entire life. She has a servant's heart." Before or after school, she promotes servanthood for students through the Maverick Community Club, as students collect recycling around the building, or lead fundraising efforts to help autism or hurricane relief efforts. She works in the nursery at her church. She helps those in need, not just in our community, but also around the world, as she participates in mission work in Africa and Central America. A colleague noted, "I am blessed to teach on a team with her and to call her friend." Principal Snyder believes that Mary is so valued at Hickory Ridge Middle for her kindness and compassionate heart for others that transcends into the lives of the students. She said, "She goes beyond the reading strategies and writing lessons of ELA. She simply makes us all better people by following her lead." Congratulations, Mrs. And our final honoree for Hickory Ridge Middle School this evening is Mrs. Marsha Frick. Would Mrs. Frick and her family please come forward? Marsha began her career with Cabarrus County Schools in the Finance Department in 2008. After six years of learning all about the district's finances and accounting and working with an awesome group of people, she decided she wanted to try something different. In September 2014, she became the testing coordinator for Hickory Ridge Middle School. Assistant Principal Shapcott praises Marsha for the job she does every day and the flawlessness of each testing session. Principal Snyder adds that Marsha creates a calmness with testing as she has all of the dates, materials, and training readily available for staff, which causes a smooth administration for teachers and students, and she says that she is bar none one of the best testing coordinators that I have ever worked with. Congratulations, Mrs. Frick, and thank you for making an impact through education at Hickory Ridge Middle And now we will recognize one half of our September honorees for our Impact Through Education Awards, and we'll do Wyancoff Elementary School. So I'd like to invite any members of the Wyancoff administrative team to come forward at this time. Did Richie leave? There he is. It's like, he didn't leave. That's okay. Our first Wyancoff honoree is Olivia Bone. Would Olivia and her family please come forward? He's gonna tell y'all to squish him. Olivia is a 5th grade student at Wyancoff Elementary School. She loves to read, play outside, and can ride just about anything with wheels. With her tremendous love of music, she's very active in the children's choir at her church, and sings solos in various drama productions and at church. She volunteers her time in support of cystic fibrosis. One of her teachers said, "Olivia is a kind and caring classmate. She is extremely conscientious and dependable, the type of student every teacher wants in their classroom. She's quick to lend a hand when someone is in need, or to cheer them up if they are having a bad day. There is no doubt the sky is the limit for Olivia." Congratulations, Olivia. Our next Wyancoff honoree is Gael Segovia Gomez. Would Gael and his family please come forward? Gael is also a 5th grade student at Wyancoff Elementary. He has attended Wyancoff since he was in kindergarten. He loves basketball and helping people. One of his teachers said, "Gael is a respectful student with an infectious smile that instantly lifts the spirits of students and teachers. He follows school expectations and always keeps a positive attitude. Gael is always willing to lend a helping hand to others in need. This year, he is already proving to be a leader amongst his peers by establishing himself as an individual who makes good choices." Congratulations, Gael. Our next Wyancoff honoree is Ms. Amanda Andrews. Would Ms. Andrews and her family please come forward? Amanda is the MTSS coach at Wyancoff Elementary School. She has worked as a 1st grade classroom teacher in our district, as well as in Buncombe and Wake Counties. She is an amazing asset to Wyancoff Elementary, and as one of her colleagues stated, Amanda works hard on a daily basis to do what is best for each and every student at Wyancoff. She is a problem solver, and no challenge is too big for her to tackle. As MTSS coach, Amanda has to work with all the staff at Wyancoff and has worked hard to build bridges between all the different departments that comprise the school. She loves children, and her goal is to meet the need of every student, whether that be academic, emotional, behavioral, or physical. Congratulations, Mrs. And our final honoree from Wyancoff Elementary School this evening is Mrs. Linda Mitchell. Would Ms. Mitchell and her family please come forward? Linda is a Title I tutor at Wyancoff Elementary. She works primarily with the 4th grade teachers and supports students both academically and behaviorally. She earned a degree in office administration from Alabama A&amp;M University and worked several years at IBM. She began volunteering at Wyancoff Elementary in 1998, when her twin daughters were students there. Mrs. Mitchell says she loves working at the dream school. One of her teachers said the following about her, "She does things for us sometimes before we even know or realize we need them done. Her rapport with students is fabulous, firm but kind. She develops relationships with children and has a knack for seeking specific needs that children have. She is a team player with teachers and students alike. Linda never complains about anything that she is asked to do and is always smiling." Congratulations, Mrs.
All right, Mr. Rusty Parker is coming to the podium to announce the Skills USA Champion.
Good evening. Skills USA is a national organization that serves high school and college students who are preparing for careers in technical, skilled, and service occupations. The Skills USA Championships are competitive events showcasing the best in career and technical education students across the nation. Contest begin locally and continue from the state level on to the national level. At the 2017 competition held in June at the Convention Center in Louisville, Kentucky, one of our students from Cabarrus County Schools brought home a gold medal. Kelby, come on up here. Kelby Thornton, if you've heard his name before, he's won this award now twice, so this is the second year he's won this. At the 2017 competition, Kelby, who graduated from Central Cabarrus High School, was the first-place winner in the National Skills USA Masonry Division Competition. His teacher at Central Cabarrus is Mr. Todd Hartzell, and actually, Mr. Hartzell could not be here this evening, so he sent me an email. He sent all of you an email, so I want to read it and explain a little bit about what World Skills is all about. This is from Mr. Hartzell. "I wanted to reach out and to thank each of you in advance, as you recognize one of my students, Kelby Thornton, who won the 2017 Skills USA Masonry Competition. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend with Kelby on this special night of recognition. I will actually be in Abu Dhabi, United Arab Emirates, this week at the 2017 World Skills Competition. He serves as a bricklaying expert and a trainer for the World Skills Organization. The World Skills Contest is held biannually, and I just wanted to let you know that Kelby has now qualified for the National Skills USA Contest, held in the next one is in 2019 in Russia. Please congratulate him for me, as well as encourage him as he begins his preparation for the 2019 competition. I have been fortunate to have taught nine first-place national champions..." I have been fortunate to have taught nine first-place national champions as a masonry instructor for Central, and it has been great seeing so many young people come through our program and continue their career in this rewarding field. Career in technical education is very strong in Cabarrus County and is well-known across North Carolina as one of the best. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Parker, our CTE Director, Yay, for the support you show CTE and how we contribute to student success in our communities and workforce." And that is from Mr. Hartzell. Kelby, you've done this twice now. Congratulations. That's a great feat.
All right, Board members, before we go to our next item, I'd just like to recognize Blake Keiger, our Commissioner, and I just want to thank him for his support for the Board of Education, and the Commissioners are doing a great job working with us as we plan into the future, and thank you a lot, Blake. Board members, we have two sets of minutes to approve, the September 5th Work Session Minutes and the September 11th Business Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as written?
Seven seconds.
All right, Ms. Furtinball makes the motion, and Mr. Walters seconds that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the motion as worded, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That motion carries 6-0, and that moves us to the Board Chair comments, which I've already seen that Dr. Lauder has a long list of things he wants to read, so I'll just defer to him and let him fill up the tab.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to remind everyone about the Program Choice Fair Wednesday night from 5:30 to 7:30 at J.M. Robinson High School. Representatives from all of our magnet schools and academies, including International Baccalaureate, STEM, Language Immersion, early college, and year-round school, will be available to answer questions and share information. Rising high school students also can learn about National Academy Foundation certified programs in areas such as engineering, information technology, finance, tourism, and health sciences. The latest edition of our district's annual report is now available online. It's titled "Retrospective" and looks back at the 2015-2016 school year. Using a school yearbook theme, the report highlights the notable events, activities, and individuals from the school year. It also includes special sections that feature CCS employees, who are also CCS graduates, and autographs from district and community leaders. The report is available on our district website and also in hard copy form in limited quantities. We held the first of five information and feedback sessions about the Royal Oaks Elementary Boundary last Thursday. I want to remind our audience, they can find the schedule of upcoming sessions and maps outlining each of the scenarios under consideration by selecting the Royal Oaks Boundary Information Icon on our district website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. You can also submit questions there. Cabarrus County Schools received a grant from the Robotics Education and Competition Foundation that is allowing us to expand the VEX Robotics Program. Coaches from 27 schools attended training last month to learn how to assemble and program robots, as well as how to use the robots competitively with student teams from each school. REC Foundation CEO Dan Mance visited with coaches and district staff to kick off that implementation. There's still time to submit a suggestion for the name of the district's newest high school. The Board will accept suggestions until October 27th. You can submit your suggestion using the electronic form, or you can print out a form and mail it in. The forms are accessible on our district website. Finally, a few reminders about important dates. First quarter ends on October 26th, which is also an early dismissal day for students. School will be closed for students on October 27th, November 7th, and November 10th. Be sure to check the district calendar for other important dates. And also, at this time, I also would like to recognize Dr. Robert Kirk, who is our current Chief of Staff here for Cabarrus County Schools. He has many years of service for Cabarrus County Schools. He was a math teacher, he was a graduation coach, assistant principal of the Glenn Center, and has served here at the county office as our Chief of Staff for about seven years. Many years of service to Cabarrus County Schools and certainly lots of service to the Superintendent's Office and to this Board. We will miss him very much, but we wish him well. He is leaving us to become the Executive Director of the West Cabarrus YMCA. As a member of that YMCA, I look forward to working together with the Y and also to watching Dr. Kirk move that organization forward. Thank you, Dr. Kirk, for all of your service here to our schools.
With that, we now move to the guest speakers. Time to address the Board. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, as revised by the Board, on May 11th, 2015, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the Board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the Board. Speakers must hand a completed card to the Board clerk no later than 6:00 p.m., the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. The Board Chair will decide the time devoted to public comments. Speakers must complete a contact information card, including their name, a group name if applicable, address, and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the Board Minutes. Tonight, I have cards from six people, and I'll start off with Ms. Kisha Sandich, and she'll come forward and talk to us about her concerns with the administration at Concord High School.
So, some time ago, my daughter came home with a card that she had to sign. She was in the 5th grade, she's 10 years old, and it talked about bullying. All of the kids in her school got one, and they had to sign it. And I'm just going to read to you guys what that says. "I promise to stop bullying. I will not bully others. I will not leave anyone out. I will help others being bullied. If I cannot stop a bully, I will tell an adult. I care, I can help, I can make a change. I will stand up for what is right. The end of bullying will begin with me. With that, I ask of you, what would you do if someone you love dearly complained to you of a bully at their school or workplace? How would you feel? Well, I can tell you from firsthand knowledge how this feels because there's a bully at my child's school. That bully is the principal. Last month, I spoke before this Board, and I asked you to check your personnel records to determine the amount of faculty who have left Concord High School and the short tenure of the current principal there. Have you taken time to complete this task? I keep asking myself, why this Board would allow a bully to become a principal at not one but two of its county schools? I have yet to identify the answer. What am I missing? What's the objective here, I say to myself? In case you are not aware of the facts which support my concerns about the current principal at Concord High School, they are as follows. Twenty-nine teachers and staff have left Concord High School under the current principalship. Nine teachers from CHS have been to the county HR Director to complain about the unjust working conditions under this current principal. Teachers from now two county schools have reported the same concerns to the superintendent relating to the current principal at Concord High School. The logo has been changed single-handedly by this principal without consulting with students, teachers, alumni, or community members. I, like many others, question where the funding is coming from when the school can't even afford calculators for its students. Board Policy 7240 has been violated by serving alcohol at a staff meeting hosted by this principal. At least four parents have spoken to the superintendent and/or Board of Education, this Board of Education, relating to concerns with the leadership of this principal. The IB program staff lack adequate training at CHS, and children from this program and the IB program are forced to seek assistance outside of Concord High School. If this isn't enough to remove the current principal from the tenure at Concord High School, what is? Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you tonight, and I want to urge you to act now. Children, families, and community are continuing to suffer while we wait. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Sandich. Mr. Brian Sims, if you'll come to the podium, please, sir. And Mr. Sims is talking about taking responsible actions in life. We call it, the survey is called the Trail Survey.
Good evening. My name is Brian Sims. I'm a parent of two children that are currently in Cabarrus County Schools. We moved to Cabarrus County because of the reputation that this school system has, and we have been delighted thus far with the education that they've received. However, members of the Board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As your inboxes have no doubt demonstrated, there's been a recent firestorm over the survey that was to be, and in some cases was actually, administered to select students in Cabarrus County. The Cabarrus Health Alliance, in conjunction with and with the full permission of the school system, is presenting a multi-tiered program, Taking Responsible Actions in Life or Trail, to select groups of 8th and 9th graders. At the heart of the recent controversy over the program is a survey that was intended to be administered to students that asks some very explicit and personal questions regarding their sexual activity and sexual preferences. While a discussion about what business the schools have in pushing what is normative sexual behavior and preference would be interesting, it is not the reason for my comments. While few will argue with the importance of the relationship between the Cabarrus Health Alliance and the Cabarrus County Schools, a serious review of the current collaborative efforts between the two entities is in order as it pertains to the Trail Program. Given that this particular project is covered by an almost $3 million grant for the Cabarrus Health Alliance, there will be greater urgency, I am sure. Per the grant abstract, which is obtained directly from the Office of Adolescent Health's webpage, I wish to highlight the following points. The three-tiered approach of Trail includes universal strategies that include, quote, "A social norms marketing campaign saturates the entire school through monthly newsletters, posters, and video campaigns to educate the students on healthy behaviors and dispel their misperceptions of peers' sexual activities." Given the nature of the survey questions, we have to seriously question what may or may not be a part of these, quote, "social norms." The next portion of the Trail includes targeted strategies that include an elevated curriculum that provides teens with the knowledge, as quote, "provides teens with the knowledge, skills, and support they require to make healthy decisions regarding their future, including those related to sexual health." While the abstract does mention sexual health, the flyer that was designated for parents leaves it off. The third portion of Trail is an intensive strategies, which are targeted specifically towards those with higher risk factors. Now, the survey determines those with higher risk factors as being the schools which have a higher percentage of free or reduced-price lunches and/or percentage of non-white students in the school. So, they determine that those are the higher risk for non-sexual norms. Now, of most interest in the abstract was a listing of desired behavioral and nonbehavioral outcomes. They are, quote, "Age of sexual initiation, ever been pregnant or gotten someone pregnant, number of times been pregnant or gotten someone pregnant, any sex in the past three months, number of times that had sex in the past three months, had sex without a condom in the past three months, number of times had sex without a condom, had sex with or without birth control." Can I turn that off, or is this just going to keep peeping? All right. It continues on, "Nonbehavioral outcomes, intentions to have sex, intentions to use birth control, speaking to guardians about pregnancy," you get the idea. Okay, these are the stated outcomes. Additionally, while the letter dated 27 September announcing cessation of the survey attempts to distance Cabarrus County Schools from any formal responsibility for the survey, the abstract paints a much different picture. It reads, quote, "Evaluators recruited eight high schools and eight middle schools from Cabarrus County and Kannapolis City Schools, all of which agreed to random assignment to intervention and comparison sites and to accommodate evaluation and program staff in schools," close quote. Begs the question, who agreed? And what did they know? And were they told to comply?
Mr. Sims, your time is up, so can you just wrap it up?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up real quick here.
Appreciate it.
According to Board Policy 4720 governing the survey of students, it lists sex behavior and attitudes as a protected topic that would normally require written approval of the parent if the survey was being administered by the Department of Education. A non-Department of Education survey, apparently, you don't have to have that same threshold. My question for the Board is, given the large amount of money in play here, we have no reason to expect that this issue is just going to go away. I urge the superintendent to exercise greater care in the discharge of his duties and demonstrate better judgment in matters that involve these private issues concerning our children. Are the superintendent and members of the Board willing to go on record to inform parents how they intend to ensure greater care going forward with the Trail Program? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. All right, Ms. Kristi Powell, if she'll come forward, she wants to talk about her concerns at Concord High School.
Unfortunately, I wanted my daughter to go before me because she's the entrance to the rest of mine. So, my name is Kristi Powell, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am the mother of Cameron Powell, who is a 2017 graduate of Concord High School. I also have a junior and a freshman who are currently attending Concord High School. We're going to have to piece some of this together because I'm going before Cameron, but basically, I'm here speaking on behalf of being a victim of bullying, bullying, on behalf of the principal at Concord High School. So, following up, which again, you'll have to piece this together, from Cameron's speech, she's referring to her suspension from Concord High School last year. "I submitted a Level 1 grievance to the school, and the principal's response was very brief and referred to my disagreement of punishment. There was not one single reference to the actual points of my grievance, which included the areas I feel where he broke the policies. My grievance focused on bullying, the bold and hateful words he spoke to my daughter and to myself. It referred to the manner in which he handled the process of the suspension, and of course, his lies. Examples are, I offered to pick Cameron up to get her home to start her suspension. He told me it wasn't necessary. In a group meeting, he denied that he ever said this. During the same meeting, I asked for my money back for prom tickets I purchased. He stated he would have to speak to the Board who planned the prom to see if this was possible. He later called me with the decision, and I asked how a group of teachers and parent volunteers could make such a decision. He floundered for answers, and when I continued to ask questions, he proceeded to tell me that if I continued to disrespect him, that he would ban me from campus. However, I never used derogatory words, cuss words, never raised my voice. I was simply seeking questions." He also proceeded to then tell me, yell into the phone, "Fine, it was my decision, not theirs." He labeled this group of kids as the Fab Eight, and he denied that, although several teachers came to several other members of this Fab Eight and told us just of that. Also, since I'm running out of time, there was a page in the yearbook that was designated for friends, like best friends. There was a group of three girls, including my daughter Cameron, that submitted their pictures. They were in turn told that the principal said that they were not allowed to be on this page because of their actions. However, when we questioned him, he told us that it was only designated to groups of two friends, not three or more, and that there would only be two friends allowed. When the yearbook came out, which is far past the time of fixing anything, there was up to four pictures of groups of three or more. And when it was questioned, he simply dismissed it and never gave me an answer. I also, over the summer, submitted my Level 2 grievance before the deadline, and unfortunately, I have not heard anything further." So, to wrap it up, so I don't take anybody else's time, during the speech, Dr. A broke, has broken most of the traditions, so let me back up. During the speech at graduation, he said that Concord High School is based off on traditions. Clearly, all of those traditions have been broken by him, and I just ask you to bring back those traditions and instill honesty within our school. Please resolve these disasters being placed on CHS before it's too late. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I'm sorry I got you and your daughter out of order, I didn't realize it. Cameron Powell, if you'll come forward, please. And Cameron is going to talk about her concerns at Concord High School.
Couldn't someone go before me?
Cameron, I'll put you back, and I'll put Mr. Antonio Leach, if you'll come forward, sir, and he's coming forward to talk about Concord High School administration, logo, and sports memorabilia, and trophies.
How are you guys doing this evening? Thank you for your time. I won't be before you long. I basically want to come before you. I was at the last meeting, and I want to come, and I want to echo everything that Keisha has said. You know, there's a lot of, it's more than just talk that's going on. And I'm speaking from the aspect of, I'm an alumni of Concord High School. I'm a product of Cabarrus County Schools, born and raised here in Concord. We are a traditional school. We are the oldest public school in Cabarrus County, one of the oldest in the state of North Carolina. That says a lot. And it appears as though all of the history of Concord High School is being erased. We don't think that we are better than anybody else, but we love our tradition. Even all the way back to when schools were integrated and Logan High School shut down and merged in with Concord High School, that's rich history. And it seems as though every time that the board does a redistricting or rezoning, the Logan community comes into play, which historically has been a part of Concord High School. And now they are stretched from Concord High School, Mount Pleasant High School, and J.M. Robinson High School. So you're taking away a large part of the history of not just Concord, but even the Logan community. I went to the school this year at Open House, and I noticed that the trophy cases are actually gone, and nobody could provide an answer. And then, one of the assistant principals said that they were in the process of getting new trophy cases. Okay, those trophies represent a lot of rich history that not just the athletes, but the students alike look at, and it serves as motivation for them. Nobody even knows where the trophies have been taken. It's been brushed off, and it's kind of been kind of brushed under the rug, hoping that nobody else would say anything about it. And then I think a half-hearted answer was given, that they were in the assistant principal's office, but no one has verified that. There's two recent state championships at Concord High School, two in football and then also one in basketball. All of that stuff has been taken out of the gym, and nobody knows where it is. That's part of our history. That's part of our legacy. And I think that we should know where that stuff is, and it should be put back. Going back to the trophy case, it came out, they had a meeting at the school probably about a month back, and now they're trying to raise money for a new trophy case. So why would you take out the trophy case before you had the money to replace the trophy case? Doesn't make sense. The logo, it's a rich history, and I won't go into the naming of Concord, how Concord became, the spiders, the significance of all of that. The new logo does not adequately represent Concord High School. It doesn't even look like a spider. And this was done without consulting any alumni, parent, or anybody. It was just done by one person. One more thing, and I will close. How can we hold our children to a higher standard than what we're holding the administration? Administration has been noted to be bullying. If a student bullies someone, there's consequences. There should also be consequences for our administration, because that's where the example is set. There's going to be, if he's going to be the head, then everything rises and falls on leadership. So if that's the type of leadership that we want at Concord High School, Concord High School will definitely fall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Our next card is for Dee Davis. Ms. Davis is going to talk about CHS.
Good evening. I have copies, if you want copies.
Bring them forward, thank you.
I'm also graduated from Concord High. I was a teacher and administrator in Cabarrus County. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My concern is about the negative working environment at Concord High School created by Principal Mr. Adam Aubach. Earlier this year, I shared concerns about Mr. Aubach's administrative methods using bullying and intimidation in a meeting with Dr. Louter. I also shared similar concerns with several board members. I would like to share that since Mr. Aubach became principal at Concord High School, 24 teachers and five support staff members have left the first year totaling 29 staff members. The total years of experience of those 24 teachers is equivalent to over 280 years of teaching experience. Over 50% or half of those teachers had 10-plus years of teaching experience. Six teachers had over 20 years' experience. Adam Aubach had zero years' experience as a high school principal, to my knowledge, when he was chosen as principal at Concord High School. Numbers and vacancies and numerical statistics will not give you an accurate picture of what has happened to the faculty at Concord High School. The fact remains that over one-third of the staff left the first year Mr. Aubach became principal. Concord High School has a very diverse population. It is that diversity that past administrators, staff members, students, and community leaders have embraced and were proud of in the past. It is the almost 300 years of teaching experience loss that reflects the damage that has been done to Concord High School and its students. Research shows that schools and urban communities have a turnover rate of 20% annually. Concord High School had a turnover rate of even larger than that at 20% last year. Nationwide, teacher turnover costs $7.3 billion annually. The cost for Cabarrus County to recruit, hire, train, and mentor new teachers to replace those that left must be substantial. Sadly, research shows that two-thirds or 66% of those new teachers hired will leave within the first five years or relocate to a better working environment. There are several victims in the loss of the staff at Concord High School. The students themselves, the teachers who left with almost 300 years' teaching experience, Concord High School and the community. The students at Concord High School are the ones who suffer most. They put their trust in us to do what is right and what is best for them. Students are the ones who suffer when teachers leave or are replaced by new teachers. Research shows that students feel abandoned and have a feeling of mistrust when teachers they trust are replaced. We owe it to all students to do what is right. Valuable teachers have left, and more will leave if research proves true and current circumstances remain in place at Concord High School. We, as a community, place responsibility on U.S. administrators and school board members of Cabarrus County Schools to give every student an equal opportunity of education and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Cameron Powell, are you able to come? Ms. Powell will talk about Concord High School.
I'm going to read this for her, I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Cameron Powell, and I am a member of the 2017 graduating class at Concord High School. I would first off like to thank the board for giving me a chance to speak and voice my concerns on behalf of myself and the current students at CHS. Now, a very brief synopsis of an extremely long story. I was a part of (inaudible) on our senior trip to Florida. While I was not the one who purchased, bought, or planned to consume the alcohol, I was one who chose to stay loyal to my two friends that did. I served my suspension, missed my senior prom, and dealt with all the rumors, true or untrue. I had never been in trouble before, ever, even as a elementary, even as a elementary school student. Thankfully, my family trusted me and believed in, and they knew the kind of person that I am, and stood behind me. However, Concord's administration, in particular, Adam Auerbach, did not. He was unwilling to start our suspension one day sooner in order for us to go to prom. His exact words were, in quotes, "It is not deserved." It was told to several staff and relayed to us that we were named the, as the Fab Eight. I see this as demeaning, degrading, embarrassing, and fits the description of bullying. From this point on, I could not bring myself to give respect to him as he disrespected me on multiple occasions. Also, at this point, it was becoming obvious, the obvious, that the majority of my teachers went unable to hide the way Dr. A was treating them as well. As one of my teachers had been at CHS for over 20 years and loved her job, or loved their job, at CHS, this teacher was uncertain how to attach a resume online. In confidence, they asked me to assist, and I helped. However, the reasons for this, simply the actions and treatment from Dr. A, the teacher felt as though Dr. A was driving them out and could no longer work under such circumstances. I find it disheartening that a man can make a school so unbearable, unenjoyable, and be a dictator to students and staff the way he does. Students are being labeled, put down, and spoken to
On a degrading
On a degrading level. No student deserves that. It scares me to think of what is, what I was forced to feel under Dr. A's actions and the way he treats his staff. I sincerely hurt and feel for the current students that have to go to Concord High School under his ruling. Every day, as Dr. A treats them in a very wrong way, in every way possible, I feel as though he needs to be removed before he does any further destruction. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. All right, board members, that carries us to the approval of the consent agenda. Thank you each for coming out tonight, and appreciate you sharing with us. And, all right, so we have the approval of the October 9th. Yes, sir.
If I may, your board, your board policy 2310, for future reference, specifically says that complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, and the quality of the educational program or school facility should be submitted initially for a response to the school district official responsible for the program or facility or to the superintendent, and that the superintendent will make available board policy and grievance procedures. A lot of these items that are being discussed repeatedly at the board meetings should fall under this policy and should not be discussed in accordance with this policy without having gone through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Board members, we'll go to the approval of the consent agenda. Just as a matter of update, we had, I said that the action item to amend the architect's contract was 8.2, it's actually going to be 8A. So that puts it not related to the consent agenda. Now, 8.1 is our consent agenda, approved in, that we set aside on October the 9th, I mean, for October the 9th. So is there a motion to approve the consent, all the items in the consent agenda as noted? Mr. Harrison, Ms. Furtinbaugh seconds that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as noted, say aye. Aye. Po, say nay. And a motion carries 6-0. And that brings us up to items 8A, which is the amendment to the architect's contract for the Southwest Elementary School. And Ms. Klutz is going to come forward and help us with that. I haven't seen a copy of this, so...
So thank you for adding it to the agenda. No one likes surprises, including us. So we found ourselves in a dilemma over the last couple of weeks, and so in order for you to understand that dilemma, I'd like to kind of go over a timeline that we have been dealing with, and then at the end, I'd like to give you some options that I think the board can and should consider. Okay? So on September 11th, the board approved the architectural contract for this elementary school. The board approved it on the 11th, on Monday. On the 13th, we issued the contract to the vendor. That's Yates-Creixberg, that's that vendor. That following week, Mr. O, I apologize, Mr. Louter is on leave and sends his apologies for not being able to be here, but Brian Cohn has offered to help answer any questions that we can, that he possibly can. So Tim and his staff realized shortly after that following week, there was going to be an issue, as they looked at design, the way that the initial design was, the square footage, and now our requirement for HB 13 as we move forward. And so if you put less children in a classroom, you're going to need more classrooms, or you're going to design the school for less capacity. So when they realized that that was a problem, they also realized that to build the school for the same capacity as was planned would cost more money. And so at that time, we alerted the board chair, we called a meeting with the chair and vice chair of the county and the school board chairs, and we discussed our problem, the money and the square footage problem. So that took several weeks, a couple of weeks to schedule because of everyone's availability. So that meeting happened on Wednesday, October the 4th, which was last week. At that time, we discussed our options. We have a plan, the board, we are preparing a letter for the board chair to sign, to also send to you, the board, requesting additional money for this problem. And so that should, that'll be going out within the next couple of days. So in the midst of all of that, we have to have a change order. A change order was proposed for the architect to continue work. If the architect, if we cannot approve the change order, then the architect has to stop working, and that will delay us, you know, until the next board meeting, if that's what you choose to do. So that, the next board meeting, the first meeting is four weeks away. If you wait to the business session, that's five weeks away. We are currently on a very tight schedule with this project. Initial groundbreaking was supposed to start in April of 17, and we would finalize by August of 18, which is a 15-month schedule for that elementary school, which is pretty tight in itself. If we take a month off of that, delay everything a month and wait for the next board meeting, we're in an even tighter, more difficult situation. So for all of those reasons, we felt it imperative to talk with our board chair. We did that today. The change order is greater than our authority, it's greater than $90,000. So our board chair suggested we put it on the board agenda so that we could talk with you about it and discuss our options. So three options that I would suggest to you. Again, we understand and know that you have not had an opportunity to review the contract, so you certainly could approve it today if that's what you want to do. Another option is when you look at board policy, 9030, that governs change orders for board for construction, it indicates that if there's a time issue, that the board chair can choose to call a special meeting. So if that's what the board chair would like to do, we would suggest the end of the week, the first of next week, and that would only put us a week out. Bill indicated from Yates that he could make up, he may be able to make up a week, but would not be able to make up four to five weeks. The other option is, clearly, the board can wait until the next board meeting. And so again, we're looking at four weeks at the earliest if you suspend your rules, five weeks if you choose not to suspend your rules, and then we'll just be in the risk situation. We'll have 14 or less months to build the school. So we'll take and try to address any questions that you have at this time.
Can you tell us how much actually this amendment to the contract is?
The architect contract was broken down into Phase One and Phase Two.
Right.
The original Phase One contract is $985,000. The amendment is broken down into Phase One and Phase Two. $150,000 for Phase One, $200,000 for total for the remaining, the second phase.
Total, total amount?
Total is $200,000 for the change order that's related to this, the addition of square foot.
And so in Phase One, we had it broken out where we had $980,000 to be spent in Phase One, and then now we have an amendment that'll need $150,000 of it.
Phase One.
Then in Phase Two, what was the balance?
So it was, hang on one second, I'll do the math for you. It's about $300,000. It's about $300,000 in phase two, but I'll get you.
All right, so $300,000 and then we would be.
Additional?
For phase two.
For phase two.
For phase two.
The original phase two.
The original phase two.
And how much extra in phase two for this?
$50,000.
That's what I'm trying to get to. Yep, so.
Last month? Yeah, the contract is.
The contract was, yeah, I just didn't want to have to go back and look up the contract again. All right, so phase one was $980,000. Phase two was $300,000 for a total of 1.28 million.
I think it's 1,285.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
985 is the first phase.
Right.
Okay. Then what you, what this amendment would do was add $150,000 to the first phase. And what would that $150,000 cover?
Covers consultants, additional architectural fees on the front end of these projects that are heavy on the front end. So when we ask the architects to move forward with this design, they've in turn, they've got to commit to their consultants to work with them as well. And a part of this fee is going to cover their additional service required because of the additional square footage we're having to build into the program.
All right, so this is just not just the architects, this is the engineering firms?
Correct. It's our architectural and engineering.
That's built within the architect.
Contracts, correct.
There's separate engineering outside of the architect contract.
All right. And then the remainder of the $50,000 is to complete the final details of the, of the, of the, okay. I'm just having, all right. I'll turn it over to any board member have a question while I'm, I got my head.
I just got a comment or a question. So bottom line, we're going to approve this regardless, right? We're forced to.
I would say if you want to build a smaller school, you don't have to. So we're building this school in Harrisburg area that has significant growth.
It's going to be overcrowded anyway.
And it, you know, doesn't make sense to us to build a smaller school.
So really, the only holdup would be, would be some of us to review a contract that you guys have reviewed, the lawyers have reviewed, probably.
Our other attorney is not here, is that correct? He is not here.
I have no problem with just doing a, you know, a meeting in a week. That way we could see it.
How about the, how about the ground? We're all going to be at the groundbreaking next week.
But, I mean, the rest of you may be, but that's fine. I don't know who else going to the law conference, but I will be gone, you know. But maybe Monday.
We're all going to be at the groundbreaking on Tuesday, aren't we?
Yep, at 4:30 on Tuesday.
You do it, the groundbreaking.
Before or after, I'm sure we can find space.
We can do it after and have a standing board meeting after the groundbreaking.
Sorry if I seem to grandstand, I apologize. That's not my nature, I don't like doing it. But it sounds like the state has put us in this pickle.
Absolutely, as a result of needing to increase the building size because of the number of students that we can place in.
Per state inaction on HB 13.
Under what we're currently operating under.
So obviously, it's no one's fault in this room. So no disparagement to anyone here, it's just purely Raleigh doing this. And it's probably happening all over the state with anyone who is building, who is so fortunate as to build right now.
And there was forethought in this decision. So we could have continued to build this school the way that it was planned. And after it gets open, we could have realized that we're housing a significantly less number of students and need an addition. So really, there was, I mean, significant foresight as we encountered this problem.
You can quote me.
But HB.
One at a time. Okay. Ms. Carpenter.
Cindy's probably going to say same thing, I. HB 13's been around a year. When they were designing this, could they not have designed it with that in mind? The HB 13 is not anything new.
Well, technically, this is the first year that it's actually been put into play. There was lots of discussion and lots of debate this past year, the past couple of years, trying to get our legislators to change their minds on that. So this is the first year that it's been enforced. And we still are attempting to get them to change their mind for next year because it will, our numbers will decrease even more in K3 where we will have fewer bodies in a classroom.
Ms. Furtinball.
Mr. Chairman, board members, you know, I have a little tolerance for unplanned actions. And Mr. Cohen, you know, out of respect for our mutual profession of being project managers, we knew during the architect interviews, in fact, those questions were asked regarding the change in class size in order to keep the core capacity or the change in room sizes or the school size. This was not new. To say it was a revelation on the Thursday after our board approved the contract is just a denial, if you will. We discussed it repeatedly. There was no communication to the board. All it would have taken from anyone in administration would have been a general memo to the board saying, we are looking into this, we will have the chair, vice chair meeting, whatever you're going to do. There was no communication until the chair contacted me this afternoon. I will continue to not, whoops, I thought maybe it went off, approve things that I don't see. I don't approve money verbally. One of the things I want to know is what is the increase in square footage by percentage? Have you calculated that?
It's, the original program for this school was 110,000 square feet. And if you take the program space, as Kelly has said, we would only be able to put in that school, based on the current NCDPI standards, 725 to 750 kids, which is vastly undersized for the growth in that area.
And what's the new square footage?
So we are now at 125,000 square foot facility, programming at 940 kids with a core capacity of 1,000. That does provide us with what's considered a 74% efficiency rating, meaning our corridor spacing is a little bit larger. And yes, could we go in and make that efficiency higher so that areas? Yeah, so it's basically a 13, about a 13% increase, 13 and a half percent increase.
Okay. Then considering the architect's fee covers the entire grounds for the design and whatnot, why is the fee increase at 15 and a quarter percent? It should be something less than the percentage of space increase.
Because the architectural fees are based on a percentage of the overall construction cost. So when the square footage of the project increased, the construction estimated cost increases. And that fee is based on what that.
We don't know what that cost is yet.
But we just have, we have a baseline that we utilize in order to establish these budgets for the school.
Okay, so I would expect if the square footage went up 13%, it's on the same piece of land, the same roads, the same parking lots, then the fee should be up by no more than that same percentage as a maximum. I don't understand a 15 and a quarter percent increase on price.
I can't do all that math. So.
I mean, fair's fair.
Yeah, so.
Look at the data.
So we're at 15,000 more feet at $200 a square foot. So that's $3 million additional, correct?
I wasn't calculating the whole price of the score, I was going on.
Yeah, I'm calculating what we use as a baseline to establish the overall construction cost.
But that's about a $25,000 difference, right? So the difference between a 15.25% increase versus a 13.69% is about $25,000. Are you suggesting, Furtinball, that we negotiate that down?
Yes, I am. I don't think we just do a standard ask approval. I think we need to understand what's behind it. And that's what would come out if we had some prep time, we could have submitted questions. We are responsible for the taxpayers' money and planning comes into play with that.
And we have negotiated this fee down some already, so.
All right. Question? Yes, Mr. Walter.
All right, the contract that we approved last month says the architect will prepare construction documents and anticipate future expansion for our project to accommodate 1,000 students with 1,000 student core capacity. Future expansion in itself is not part of the contract documents and will not be bid as an alternate. Doesn't say anything about square footage, it says about students.
Correct. And the student, the student count based on NCDPI standards is what dictates the square footage of the project. So as you start laying out the number of classroom versus the number of kids you can put in that classroom, and until you actually put pen to paper and calculate those square footages of what you have to have, you don't know how many rooms you're going to put in there.
All right, well, I would like to review with contractor, let's get our attorney to, attorney to feed it, feedback from our attorney on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll bet the school boards all over this state have repeatedly asked our legislators to deal with this matter and to plan ahead so that we can plan ahead.
Well, just to give the public a better idea of what's actually happening so they can understand, because we really haven't broken it down. The original school, the Southwest Elementary School of Harrisburg, was scheduled to have be designed for 1,000 students. When DPI was consulted, with that in mind, we know that the class size for K2 will be reduced from 20 to 16? Or is it 17?
Current standards, 18 for kindergarten, 16 for second grade, 17 for, I'm sorry, 16 for first grade, 17 for second and third grade. And then there is no max on fourth and fifth grade.
Okay. But the amount of square footage associated with the K2 was 1,088 feet per room regardless of the number of students in the room. Is that correct? Is that what DPI is? That's what I kept hearing in our conversation.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do not have that information.
All right. Well, that's what I understood in our meeting with the commissioners or the chairs and vice chair. Is that what you understood, Ms. Carpenter? And then the subsequent sizing of the rooms for 3.5 was going to be 700 and, or 880 square feet, I believe, or 850, something, something along that. So it was a much smaller square footage. But we were going to have a higher incidence of class overages and it wouldn't, it would go way beyond what traditionally has been allowed in classes because they've not capped the height of that.
They could go to 35, it was said, they could go.
Yeah, there is no limit on fourth and fifth.
There's no limit. So the original design was for 1,000. As a result of the new legislation, if we kept the number of classrooms only that we needed to stay at 1,000, then we would have reduced the number of classrooms of K2 to keep that in line, which would reduce the, which would have kept the school at 110,000 square feet but reduced the core population of the school to 850. And board members, you were sent some information.
750, Mr. Chairman.
750?
Yes, sir.
All right. Because this, this piece of paper that you sent to us earlier this week was 850, if you know what I mean. It said 850, so you said 750, but that was, okay. All right, so in order to accommodate the 1,000 student core, we had to add, you'll have to add 15,000 square feet of classrooms to accommodate the design for 1,000. And that's what, that's based on the new DPI recommendations for K2. K2 is what's driving this whole sizing, it's not the 3.5 portion. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that is because we're having dramatic decrease from.
It's actually K3, four and five.
It's K3, four and five.
Okay, okay, K3, all right. So based on that information, we had to have additional classrooms to accommodate the smaller class sizes. And we went from up in the fourth and fifth grade sizes, I think we were at six classrooms, and we had to have eight classrooms in the kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. And so we had two more classrooms that we had to add for each one of those grades in order to get to that level, based on what I heard at the meeting on Wednesday. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, board members, we have three options before us. When can we see the contract? Obviously, you have a little bit of homework to do to see if you can, see what Ms., if you can meet Ms. Furtinball's request.
So he has the current change order now and you can review that. But going back and trying to negotiate a lesser amount, he'll need some time to do that.
All right, well, can you send us a copy of what exists? So at least we can begin looking at that. And all that would be is a number change, once we, once y'all go through your negotiations on that piece of it. And then we will plan on having a meeting. Well, I need a motion to see what we're going to plan on having a meeting. So board members, obviously, the next time that we are all together is on, the 17th is when we next are all gathered together. So that was, that's one option as a date. Obviously, there's other options, we could meet anytime during the next week to do that, if board members have so desired. Or we could wait until our next meetings, as Ms. Klutz suggested is a farther out option. So is there a motion to choose one of the three options? I don't get a sense that anyone wants to pick the option for today. So now I'm leaving.
Could we have the information by the 17th?
We can have.
You can have the current contract, the current change order today, right now.
No, but I mean, would you, would you have time by the 17th to?
Certainly, certainly.
To do that?
So hopefully by Friday, you could have the information to us so that we could have time to digest it over the weekend.
So Mr. Lauder doesn't return until tomorrow, no, Wednesday. So we would probably not want to send it out before Wednesday.
Right, okay.
But if Wednesday is appropriate, I'm sure we can make that happen.
And is the county fully apprised of where we are right now and?
So yes, we were in a two-hour meeting discussing all of these issues.
Could we maybe meet on the 17th, maybe at the bus garage? That wouldn't be far from where we're having the.
We'll have a, we'll have a job trailer on site.
Oh, will we have someplace to meet there? Oh, okay.
Do we have to start a formal board meeting with Ms. Monroe attending and all the, all the setup? Or can we have a meeting?
Wait a minute, there's more than one conversation. So Rob just asked, is there room in the job trailer? Brian, Mr. Cohen, excuse me. Mr. Cohen kind of hedged and said, well, there's kind of room, but, so he, Mr. Walter suggested the media center over in Wyancoff. Weddington, I'm sorry. All the W's. Okay, so Mr. Harrison, you now are making a comment?
Only can we hold a meeting to take this vote without a lot of logistics in terms of having our board secretary meet us over there and those kinds of, you know, pieces to have an actual formal meeting under the offices of open meetings laws.
Well.
I mean, if that's the case, why not just come back here?
You can, you can post the meeting for a time, date, and location. And for a special board meeting, you need 48 hours notice. You have to post it, you have to post it on your website, but you can hold it anyplace you want to.
Right. And actually, Dr. Lauder is the official secretary of the ward, so he doesn't, he could take whatever notes are necessary to get us through that.
He just takes his trusty tape recorder with him.
That was an option. All right, so board members. All right, so board members, is there a motion to move forward with this? Or is there any more discussion, any more options? Anything else, anybody else would like to say?
Like I say, I'd like, I could with Cindy wanting, oh, excuse me, to get that information, to, to work through that, to see about those totals and everything. I agree that, you know, just don't take it for granted on those, those fees and everything to...
Wednesday on that. So if we're able to make it happen, then you'll just get the change order. If for some reason there's something going wrong, we'll communicate that too.
And then just have everything to us by maybe the weekend, definitely. And then we could have everything by the 17th. But I would make a motion that we have a meeting after, after other meeting on the 17th at Weddington. What time is, you think we'll be through with the...
5 o'clock.
Make it 5:15 to get over there.
5:15?
The high school is at 4:30, so, yeah.
I'm just saying to get in the morning.
Yeah, so we can all glad hand each other and be happy, okay.
5:15, you think, 5:15 at Weddington.
Okay, so the motion...
On the 17th.
Meet at Weddington Meeting, Media Center?
Yeah, Weddington, yeah. Media Center.
And I would just suggest that we give Dr. Lauder the option of which school. It may be easier with the middle school being open a little bit later for sports and their later schedule, as opposed to keeping Weddington open, I don't know.
I don't think it really matters. I think we just have to talk to, yeah, we'll get in, and we'll talk to Ms. Dolan tomorrow, so Weddington should be fine.
Okay.
All right, so Ms. Carpenter makes the motion, Mr. Harrison's second set motion. Is there any more discussion on this? Oh, excuse me, is there any more discussion on, on this item? I have one item to say. At the time, we did meet Wednesday, we did not know anything about what the restrictions were or the, that the architect contract was going to have to be consummated this quickly. So we did not know, I just want the board to understand that this is kind of on me as fast as it was on the rest of them. I mean, I found out in the middle of the day today, and that was as quick as I found out until we could get through it, so...
I think we're all in the same place with that.
Right, right.
It happened pretty quickly, and as, as Brian started to present a contract to you to sign, I indicated that it has to have board approval, so we all kind of were in the same ball field there.
Okay, good. I just wanted, for the record, Wednesday, we really didn't know that we had to move this quickly, no. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, the, the notice of the special meeting will have to include the purpose of the special meeting as well.
Yes.
And so that would, so the motion would be to hold a special board meeting at 5:15 on October 17th at the Weddington Media Center for the purpose of considering changes to the Southwest Elementary School architect's contract?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Ms. Monroe, did you, did you hear what Mr. Schwartz said? Okay. All right, so we have that motion, we've had our discussion, it's time to vote. All in favor of meeting at the Weddington Hills Media Center on 10/17 to consider the amendment to the architect's contract for the Southwest Elementary School, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And that motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much for your time, and now it's time for us to convene in closed session. So I'm prepared to receive motions to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, a charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee to review personnel recommendations. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
And Mr. Harrison makes the second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And we are now in closed session.